So, welcome to the TC Palm Editorial Board meeting to interview candidates for Indian River County's School Board District 3. I'm Larry Ritzman, columnist and community editor, and I'm joined by fellow editorial board members Adam Neal, editor and news director, Gil Smart, columnist, and Louise Philippi and Terry Schlitt. I'm not sure if Terry's on yet, but they're both Reader Advisory Board members. I'll lead the questioning and open it up to other editorial board members at the end. Adam will direct the video coverage, and if we get questions from our social media audience, he might decide to post one or two questions at the end of this session. Thank you for streamlining this process. By completing the questionnaires ahead of time, the board members have reviewed them and other documentation that we've come across. Your answers can be found at tcpalm.com/selections, along with other stories, videos, and information about the August 18 election. At the conclusion of this interview, editorial board members will discuss possibly writing editorial to recommend a candidate in this race. We've got several questions for you today, and we might end up having more of a conversation than just a simple Q and A. Our goal is to be completed in 45 minutes to an hour. Because of our time constraints, we ask that you keep your answers concise. Just like when you are on the dais, you'll have to determine what that means and be respectful of others. We'll start the questions with Peggy. So, first question, what is your reaction to State Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran's recent mandate requiring all schools to open in the fall and laying out their requirements districts must meet to offer any sort of non-traditional remote instruction in addition to their in-person option?
Well, thank you, Larry, and everyone at TC Palm for holding this Zoom forum today. I really appreciate this. I read the information yesterday from Richard Corcoran and Ron DeSantis, and when I looked at all of that, the first thing it said that it will be a local decision on what to do. Obviously, we have three options here in Indian River County: the brick-and-mortar where they go into school, and we have all the safety precautions that we can do, and then the online with the Indian River Virtual School, and then the transition. Those may not want to start at the very beginning. When I looked at our results, I guess, in COVID, in the last 72 hours, there have been 27,000 new cases here in Florida. So, that concerns me. And I'm just going to speak as a former teacher and principal and assistant principal. All the recommendations they make are obviously for our safety and security, but they will be challenging. At a high school with either 1,500 to 2,000 students, keeping social distance, making sure that people are using hand sanitizer, they recommended having another clinic on campus for COVID. All I know that this will be very, very challenging. It will be a community working together to make this happen. I know people are concerned as they come in with the testing and the temperature check. You know, how will our teachers do through this? So, I'm concerned with our cases still going up, that it will be a real challenge in August. As we all know, if these cases start spinning again in August and increasing, we could have to retract and go back to what we were doing. But whatever we do, we have to make sure that our students, teachers feel safe, our staff feel safe, our parents feel safe about their students going there. This is something that the community needs to work together with on the district. You know, I wish masks were mandated. I wish that all of us would honor respecting everybody with mask, hand sanitation, and social distancing. So, I understand that they want to get everybody back to school. Everybody wants to get back to school, but it's still, I have some concerns on how this is going to work, and I will follow this closely.
Thank you, Peggy. Laura?
Thank you, Larry, for that question. The first thing that I looked at was, is this a mandate that all schools? This is the only option, and that is not the case because, for me, local decision-making is always the best. We do not need Tallahassee dictating every move that Indian River County needs to be making. We need to create, adapt, and craft a plan that fits our community, not what fits everyone in general over the entire state. So, with that being said, yes, that he is mandating that the brick-and-mortar opens, but one other concern that comes with mandates, and we've been seeing it endlessly, is that the costs that go along with the mandate. So, if all these schools are being required to open and the school districts across the county or the state are required to have the bus services and all the services that are needed, in addition, other districts or other options are going to have to be available to students that have underlying health issues or there's family members with health issues. This is a very expensive time for school districts, and we're already on a tight budget. So, with any type of mandate, I always look at, okay, if you're going to require it, then are you going to fund it? And that is not something that I'm seeing, that funding's going to come with some of the mandates. But fortunately, here in Indian River County, we've already proposed our plan, and we have three options. And one of those was the brick-and-mortar. The other one is the virtual school. And then the other one is the nine-week, I call it a probationary period because parents can see how we're operating, and once they feel comfortable, then they can decide if they want to send their child back to school. But the most important is local control and allowing the parents to have safe options for their students, for their kids.
Thanks, Laura. We'll go with Laura on this question. When was the last time you changed your mind on a political issue? Please explain when, and what it was, and how it happened. I think Laura's muted.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm going to say, one of the most recent, I have a couple. I have two that stick out to me. One of the areas that, growing up in the South and, you know, having family in Georgia and really having that deep Southern root, I was raised with a perspective that the Confederate flag was just your, this is just a Southern thing. But as I really start talking to my black friends and other community members that I really respect, I see that my upbringing and the way that that was always presented to me isn't how it's perceived with the Confederate flag. And that is something that I have opened my heart to and opened my mind to. And I do see that that Confederate flag that has been in our school district is a distraction. It is for the students that we have in the school district that it is seen as a symbol of hate. And as a school board member, I'm not so prideful to say I didn't see it that way, and I see it that way now. So, that is probably one of the most recent decisions or opinions that I've had that I've changed my opinion on.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Very good question. I do want to say something in regards to Ms. Sork's last comment on the information that was sent to us regarding the CARES Act. Indian River School District did receive $2.8 million in the CARES Act. Now, when you looked at it at the very beginning, and I talked with Mr. Fagan, it was regarding, you know, protection, school counselors, PD for teachers, and I think most of that now, when we're looking at opening with our mortar schools, you know, mortar building going in there, a lot will be spent on that. So, we did get a little help there. I don't know if this is a change, but I really have thought long and hard about student safety, you know, student safety and security, let alone with the COVID security and our African-American students coming back to campus after this type of summer they had. I think a lot of time to react in security and the Aaron Weiss rule about getting more security personnel on campus, or having teachers or certified people who are there getting the training and having guns on campus. As a principal, I wouldn't want that. I would want someone from the SRO camp, or the sheriff, or the Vero Beach Police helping us with that. But again, this is all reactive. The one thing that we need to do and get back to, and I had that at Gifford Middle and Sebastian River High School, are the smaller learning communities. You know, we're reacting to things that happen on campus with the shootings and just the chaos that happens after that. We've got to know our students. We've got to have smaller learning communities where they can be together with the English, math, science, and social studies teacher. I did it at the high school, and I did it at Gifford Middle. You get to know your students. You get to understand them. All of the core teachers have the same students. I think we've gotten away with that mainly probably because of budget, but I think we need to be more proactive in this type of stance. You know, this is the one thing nobody wants to happen on any school campus. And sadly, for these students, it's almost a norm when they hear something like that. I just want Indian River County to be proactive with this and working with our SAC teams, with our teachers, with our volunteers, with our parents, to know our students so that we can refer them to the help they need if we have any concerns. So, let's just be proactive on this kind of stance instead of reactive. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we'll go to Peggy on this question. Everybody seems to want to be a fiscal conservative. Give us up to three examples. No explanation needed of why, of things you view as being on the chopping block in the first budget you see.
Okay. Looking at the general fund balance at the end of the 1819 school year, in 1920 school year, there was a difference from 11% at 1819 and 5%. So, we spent $9 million more than allocated that came out of our general fund balance. I don't have all the information of what we spent, but I'd like to see where that went. I guess anything, you know, it's very, very hard to say that, but non-essentials. We don't want to hit the classroom. We don't want to hit any kind of direct instruction for students. So, I would basically say, look at our administrative positions. Are they all necessary? I think sometimes in the district office, we may have people that kind of combine on a few things. So, I would look there. Our CWA and support staff, they're struggling now with meeting the mandates for so many custodians for school. We can't do any kind of cut there because it's going to even be more important with COVID-19 and everything that we're doing. So, I would look at administrative. I would look at district as far as any kind of combination there and just make sure that I don't hit the classroom for anything. I guess the non-essentials and keep the direct instruction right there because we all know a student's growth, academic gains, is due to that teacher in the classroom. Thanks.
Thanks, Peggy. Laura?
Okay. So, did you ask for just my three, or do you want me to explain them?
Just please give us up to three examples. No explanation of why.
Okay. One area, definitely, we need to keep going after our legal fees. They're still way above what we need to be spending, and we need to be more diligent that our dollars go into the classroom, not the courtrooms. Another area are, we have to get a little bit more business savvy in negotiating our service contracts. Like Dr. Moore brought forward, we could save a couple of $100,000 this year if we could go into a multi-year contract, or contract. So, that's an area. We've got to get more business savvy there. And then another area, I just think there's still room for improvement in efficiency. We've been trying to tackle the mismanagement that's been going on, and, you know, we've been putting out fires versus just being to be proactive. We've been reactive as a district. So, I think it's time now that we have the great leadership in place to get really efficient and scrub that budget and really understand where every dollar in that budget's going. And if it's not going into the classroom, then we need to consider that's the area to take out.
Okay. Laura, we'll start with you on this one. In 2012, the school board asked voters to increase property taxes by .6 mils to fund shortfalls in education funding caused by the Great Recession. Four years later, I'd say four years later, the tax expired, and in 2016, we were told the district needed to assess a half a mil to fund 31 positions, technological enhancements, and improvements to vocational education. Now taxpayers are being asked to tax themselves a half a mil again. The other, the milage has already expired after four years. So, is this a good use of local option tax dollars? Why?
Well, I am going to say, I've been on the board since 2016. When, I would like to really explain some benefits here and some negatives. The benefit of not knowing where we would be today with COVID, because the taxpayers approved that milage four years ago, Indian River County was ahead of almost all the school districts in the state of Florida and even across the country because, over the last three and a half years, we have purchased with that milage 10,000 laptops. Because we had those laptops, we were able, as soon as the governor came out and said, "Schools are closing on that March 13th," March 16th, we were over at our schools distributing these laptops while our teachers and our administrators were putting together this provisional plan that we thought was only going to be for a couple of weeks that ended up to be until the end of the close of school. If the school district did not have the benefit of having that milage to really put the money into that technology, I don't know where we would be today. We would have been way behind on trying to put in a provisional plan because we wouldn't have had the technology. What I do know, because studying the budget, and before I was on the board, I thought I knew more than what I really know now. What I do know now is that school districts across the state of Florida are underfunded, and we have the money to meet the basic needs. In order for us to go above and beyond and offer a higher quality of education than what other school districts are doing, we have to go out to our local residents and our local voters and ask for that. Now, for this milage that's coming up on the referendum, it's not for the same needs that was in 2016. The milage that's coming up are for three other critical areas that this school district, our superintendent and the boards identified, that you as the voter, you as the taxpayer, we are going to lay it out. This is what we need it for, and it's up to you to decide if you want to help us pay for it. And if not, we'll just have to continue to get creative and continue to look for other ways to be able to fund that, and that typically comes through community partnerships.
Okay. So, just for the record, Laura, are you in favor of it or not? Yes or no?
Of this new milage, correct?
Yes.
Larry, if we need it, yes, I am.
All right. Thank you. Peggy?
I think the best or the most important thing a community can do for their children is give them the best education possible, whether it's public school, private school, public charter, homeschool, virtual school. I think that's very, very important to a community. But right now, our community has changed in many ways since I have arrived in Vero Beach. We have a population of about 53% that are poverty or ALIS population, which is the working poor. So, we have a unique situation here. Yes, the voters approved this 65% last time, and yes, I am for this milage. But the one thing I think we still need to do, and talking with people, they're still not seeing it, what did we spend that money on from 2016 to 2020, and how did that help us? That's one thing that the voters really need to hear. An existing milage today, someone could say, you know, I could say that $100 or $200 a month on taxes for the milage, but I want to know what it's for. Why are we doing this for our children? The superintendent, I believe, is having a workshop tomorrow, July 9th, regarding the milage. This milage is on the August 18 ballot. I think it's important now to get that information out and not with a technology paper giving all this information. We need a pie chart. Where did this go? How did this help our students? Yes, the laptops are great getting those out to students. I mentored four young men during this online instruction, and they used the school district laptops. So, that was great for them to have. But I think our taxpayers really need to know what these three components are, where we are going with it, and how it will help our students. Again, this is a time where a lot of people are struggling: unemployment rates, just not getting back to their job full-time. And again, our parents, I know they believe in the school system and they support the school system, but let's give them the information they need to make their decision on the vote.
Thanks, Peggy. And we'll start with you on this question.
Okay.
Please cite three metrics you will use to help determine, I'm sorry.
Hey, just interrupting. Laura had a comment to make.
Oh, go ahead, Laura.
Can I follow up to that? One thing about the milage, by law, we have to post in the paper what we're doing with the funds that we've received. The other day, I did check with Mr. Fagan, our CFO, because that was brought up, and I wanted to validate that we are being transparent with posting that. And also, he informed me that it was on our district website. And I remember back, and I think it was last March, when I was at the Taxpayers Association, I also gave a presentation, just as a board member, given an update on how we've utilized our milage funds. We spent, obviously, not only on laptops, but we're in a short amount of time to be able to discuss items. We have also, we have the Treasure Coast Technical College that we use some of those funds to be able to fund that and fund some of those programs. And we've done some really good things with those dollars, and I don't want anyone to think that we're not being transparent on where those funds are going. Anyone is welcome to call the district. If they can't find it on the website, or if they missed it when it was in the paper, I would encourage them to reach out to us so that they know exactly where that money's going.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, the question for Peggy is, please cite three metrics you will use to help determine whether the school district is meeting its mission each year.
All right. When you look at our strategic plan, you can see the components of three or four items: hiring and retaining great school teachers, community partnerships, the most important one, the student-desired outcome of graduating, making sure we have a good climate and culture. But the three metrics I think I would use would be graduation rate for all students, white and black. How are we doing there? The other metric that is really important is third grade, where they are with the FSA on Level 3, which is considered passing for English and Math. And I guess the other one would be, in our middle schools, taking a look at the gains they are making. As a former middle and high school principal, we knew it was really hard to catch up if they didn't come to us on reading grade level. And now we have more information on third grade. And what they're now saying is, we really need to have some plans from birth to 3 for language development, and then kindergarten to 3 for making sure that they are staying online. We also have another metric of kindergarten readiness. So, I guess that would be my fourth one, Larry. Right now, at the last meeting at GYAC, I saw that about 62% of white students were ready for kindergarten, and 42% of black students were ready for kindergarten. So, right then and there, I know it would be something that we need to look at and move forward on. So, the kindergarten readiness, third grade, ELA, and Math, looking at the middle school gains, and then also high school graduation rate. But again, at middle school and high school, in order to graduate, they have to pass the 10th grade FSA. They need to pass the Algebra EOC of the 24 credits and 2.0. But all that is hard to do unless you're on grade level when you're coming up. So, this really, I'd love to be part of a system that would even create a birth-to-three implementation plan. I saw that when I was taking a class with Learning Alliance. Several large school districts are doing that to make sure that students have equal access to really good preschools. I know when I went to kindergarten, that's when you started learning, but no more. So, kindergarten readiness, graduation rate, third grade LA and Math, and I'd still look at the middle school gains. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Laura?
Can you repeat that question? I want to make sure I understood it.
Sure. Please cite three metrics you will use to help determine whether the school district is meeting its mission each year.
Okay. So, our mission is maximizing the full potential of all students. We have developed a strategic plan right here. We just finished it as a board, 2025, and it was with collaboration with all stakeholders, the board, the superintendent, the superintendent's cabinet. We have a very solid plan in place. What we know is what you measure gets done. So, one commitment that we do have from the superintendent is to give the board an update every month, quarterly, how we're doing on our strategic plan. Because what you don't want to have is at the end of the year, you realize that you needed to tweak and you needed to readjust. You need to be looking at that and going along and making sure that you're hitting all those marks. Now, one area that I strongly feel is that academic achievement is what we're all here for. It's academic success for all our students. One thing that I do know is that in third grade, you are, up to third grade, you're learning to read because at third grade, on, you're reading to learn. And it is very important that we have those collaborative partnerships and we have those tools in place for our reading coaches. So, that's one area. However, how are our students scoring on our, and understanding the literacy in third grade? Something that I think that we've been really lacking, and I have two students that just finished in middle school, is that you have an emphasis on elementary school, and then you have an emphasis on high school. And then when they get to high school, you realize these students are way behind. So, I would like to see, and something as a district for us to work on, is third grade, have a measurement in seventh grade, and then the measurement in 10th grade. Now, 10th grade, what you need to look at, have these students completed some of their core work, or what track are they on, and if they're career-bound, we need to be getting them into these vocational programs that we have. We have this wonderful technical college, CTE programs. And then another area that we need to be getting these students in in 10th grade and starting to get them prepared is the dual enrollment. So, those are the, those are three grade groups that I really would like to see a measurement and keeping track of those.
Thanks, Laura. We'll go with Peggy for this next question. Start with her. Please give an example of something specific you've done that has displayed your commitment to improving lives of people who are members of groups that have been discriminated against.
Okay. I guess you could say I've walked the walk for many, many years here. I've been a student advocate all my life, a teacher supporter, and I love working with parents and volunteers. One of the things that I've always, always been concerned about is our DSEC plan. I reviewed the DSEC plan from 1967 and also 1994, and I've attended equity meetings. I am one who will reach out to students, black, white, Hispanic. I want everyone to be successful. When I look at the money we've spent on the DSEC plan, which is $750,000 for components we had when I was a principal, and that was administrative staff, we were equal in ratio there, our support staff, and also our facilities. And I think about that, and I just cringe. That money can go in the classroom. That money can be there for extra resources. I know our after-school programs at GYAC, Daisy Hope, and Crossover Mission are working very, very hard with students, and the majority are minority students. And I've also been mentoring students for Crossover Mission. I guess you could say that the one thing that has always been very true to me is that I want each and every child to be successful. If you look at the graduation rate when I was Sebastian River High School principal from '98 to 2009, we beat Vero every year. And I think one of the things for that reason, and Vero is such a great traditional school, is because we really, really honed in on our Hispanic students, our black students, our white students, at the same pace, at the same level. at the same pace, at the same level. I am very proud of hiring and recommending many African-American teachers. I'm very proud of saying I have support from African-American teachers and community. And I'm just one that had never seen, where I I wouldn't, wouldn't reach out to someone and and make sure that they are successful. And the students when I was there, whether it would be F C A or F S A, I would call them individually, make sure they got into the summer help so they could still pass F S A even after graduation, so they could get that diploma. So there are two things that I would always, always do with students, and that is make them feel connected. The one thing I think that most students would say about me is that I was fair and I was consistent. Now, believe me, they didn't always like my decisions sometimes as a principal or assistant principal or dean, but they knew I was there for them. I think it's neat when I even have my campaign going now, hearing from many former students that that I somehow made a difference. So I continually reach out. That's not a new thing for me. I continually reach out, and it's a norm for me to want every student to be successful in every area and graduate.
Thanks Peggy. Laura?
Well, I am going to say that I have the heart of a, someone that wants to be a servant. With that being said, I I got on this board because I had looked at this fifty-three-year desegregation order that this school district was under. And when I got on the board, the board had, or the superintendent at the time had hired an attorney to negotiate terms that should just be how we treat each other. You know, expectations that we would assume that would be there. And at that time that I got on the board, you know, it was a different mindset. It was more of a, we can't talk to you without our attorney. And I wanted to be the voice on the board that said, let's sit down and let's work through this. Because having this fifty-three-year-old desegregation order hanging over this community was not good for anyone. So that was, that is one of the the driving forces in in local control and being a mom is why I even ran the first time to be on the board. But also, I had, I had been a single mom for twelve years. And I did notice whenever I was a single mom that I was discriminated against in in several different areas. So over my last twenty years, I had become a mentor to single moms and single dads, especially single moms, because sometimes they had been beaten down and they just didn't have the self-esteem. And it was just, it was almost like a generational cycle that the the mom couldn't see herself being elevated and getting a quality education and and wanting, being able to do better for herself to even help her kids. And so over the last twenty years, I had become a mentor to to single moms. And I I hope I've made a difference. I think I have.
Thanks Laura. I guess we'll go with Laura. You get the first, the first shot at this question, which is, please grade the effectiveness of this school board, giving them a grade of A through F with a one-sentence explanation of why.
I'm going to give this current school board an A. We we have been a courageous, bold school board that is leading this district in the right direction.
Thank you. Peggy?
I had a rebuttal in that last statement. May I say that?
Sure, go ahead and then.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm sort of talked about school board attorney and fees. The two people that the school board can hire, evaluate, and dismiss are the school board attorney and the superintendent. So when you look at attorney fees, I think you just have to follow the the money on the school board attorney. If she is doing something, who told her to do it, and what was the cost? And while Ms. Zork was on the board, at least three hundred thousand was spent on the D sec plan. As far as the school board right now, I would say a C. I still see dissension. I still see a lack of respect sometimes. And I want what I want to see are business-like meetings with a desired outcome to do the best for our students and not have personal agendas.
Thank you.
May I respond?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so I'm going to say that one board member cannot direct or stop the spending of legal fees. It takes the consensus of three. My approach, my view was, let's sit down, let's talk with the N double A C P. Let's work this out. We do not need the attorneys. I was only, there was only, you know, I wasn't in the majority. But I do have here that, starting in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen twenty, the the legal fees for the desegregation during two thousand eighteen, nineteen were eighty-nine thousand. And during the nineteen twenty, they drastically went down to almost half. Before that, it was almost, it was almost five hundred fifty thousand with the passport. But what you're seeing with this new board is a different mindset of, let's get this done. Let's work together. We don't need the attorneys in the room. And also, it's not just with this board. It's also with our new superintendent, who has been a great leader in being able to collaborate and work with everyone. And he's just such a breath of fresh air.
Thank you. Anything else on that?
No, I just, I'm fine right now.
Okay, uh, let's see. Let me just check the time. Maybe, okay, maybe one more question I'll open up to the board. So I guess we'll start with Peggy on this. The current board is made up of three lifelong educators, including former principals. How important is diversity, you know, in terms of career to a board?
I think in general, diversity is good. I think I have a unique resume and and life experiences at the local district and state level. I've seen it from the state level with eight hundred member schools of the Florida High School Athletic Association. So I got to see how everything would work there. And the differences in our schools, depending on the area where they are in the state. I've seen it at the district level as executive director secondary, and of course, at the local level as a teacher, assistant principal and principal. And I understand that, you know, diversity can certainly be an issue. But I think the most important thing here is the role and responsibility of a board member. I mean, the three main roles are setting policy, setting budget, approving budget, changing budget, amending budget. And of course, then the hiring, evaluating, and dismissal of the school board attorney and superintendent. Again, when I went around to many, many groups from August through December, and then after I filed in January until about second week of March, when everything kind of stopped, I kept hearing these things, you know, what what do we want? So I set my three platforms, regaining community respect, restoring employee trust, and then respecting school board policy. Now, in general, other things that they did say is they retired a personal agendas, and and they also talked about dysfunction, how the board was working. I want a, I want a school board that conducts itself in business-like meetings. I want a school board where, even though it's a three-two vote, when you're that one of the two, you agree to consensus. Consensus doesn't mean that you're going to just one hundred agree to that. Consensus means you will support what was done and not get off on personal agenda and 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 other items. Also, what I see, you know, is the discussion at many of the board meetings. If you watch them, it's, are we doing our homework before the board meeting? Why are these questions coming up? How can we make this more efficient? And I believe I have the skills and the and the toolset to do this. I'm a great researcher. I will look at all information before I make a decision. You know, no one will tell me how to vote. I will look at the information and make a decision. I understand policy. I've written it at the local and state level. I understand, and I know how important it is to students and teachers and parents. I lived that. And I also understand the F B F P, the budget, and how it is given to us through the F T E, which, how many students are at the school? But that's not the issue. It's a seat time that these students need to have in order to get that. So I have a really good, solid foundation in all the roles and responsibilities. But you know, more importantly, I'm a parent. Three of my children went through the school system. They all graduated and are doing well now because of the Indian River County Public School System. Two graduated from Vero Beach and one from Sebastian River High School. So it's just not, as an educator, you know, I'm much more than an educator. I'm a mom. I'm a grandma. I'm someone who understands what the responsibilities are at the school. And I also understand what people are going through at the schools. I can't imagine being a principal right now. It's tough. Can't imagine being a teacher. But I know my role and support would be an asset to this school board. Thank you.
Thanks Peggy. Laura?
I do think that a well-functioning board has to be diverse. And I appreciate you bringing this question up Larry, because even if I wasn't running for the school board, and I would still be concerned with the fact that, well, I'm not concerned that we have educators on the board. So let me back that up. But we have two lifelong educators who are former principals. We have an educator who is a university professor. And currently, there is one board member that has a a child that's at, in the upper grades. Coming up in November, there is going to be, there's going to be myself who has children that are currently in the the public school system, and then the one other board member. So one benefit of that is the fact that, as a professional in the boardroom, I'm making decisions. I'm I'm setting, voting on the budget. We're setting policy. We're we're putting input into the policies and the budgets. But as a parent, I'm seeing my decisions play out over into the middle schools, the high schools. And then I have, I have two that are in high school. I have one that's starting middle school this year, and I have two grandchildren that are in elementary school. So I've seen the decisions that we've made into, on the, on the dais, and I've followed them through, and sometimes they don't make it over into the schools. And so as a parent, I've been able to question some of the the decisions that we've we've made. My background is in operations management. I I understand budgets. I've, that's my life. I love numbers. I love analyzing. I I love asking a lot of questions because that's how you learn. One area that was brought up is do your homework. I I spend hours preparing, looking at all different angles of of the agenda. When I get to the the board meetings, I do ask questions. If if that's a question, sometimes I ask questions because if I receive the same question multiple times, and I respond to constituents or parents or or teachers, that's a question that I'm going to ask at the at the board meetings so that everyone can hear the answer. Because I like to ask a lot of questions, that means I'm learning. That means that I want others to have that same information that I have. And I really think there is a lot of value in having the three educators that we have on the board. But we need to have more voices than just educators on the school board because because we have an entire district full of educators. And it really, we have to have the voice of the parent, and we have to have the voice of the taxpayer who is up there questioning the budget, questioning accountability, questioning transparency, all those things that typically that, you know, many don't want to talk about in public. But I feel as a taxpayer, I'm asking those questions, and I'm bringing forth information from the dais that I, as a community member, would want to know. And so I'm not going to apologize for for asking a lot of questions.
Every rebuttal.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to let everybody know, I I too am a parent. I'm a grandparent. I've been a taxpayer here for forty years. I understand the role and the responsibility of a school board member. I have read the board policy several times. If anyone's read the red book, it's it's not easy reading, technical reading, and I understand what the role and responsibility is. And to everyone watching that, I will stay in my lane, and I will not get involved with everything else. And I promise I will work hard each and every day for a student. And being an educator is something I've been proud of my entire life. Thank you.
Okay.
I follow up to that.
Sure.
Is there a rebuttal to rebuttal?
It's a good conversation. I appreciate that.
I do too.
One thing that I have learned is that the public school system is a system that does not like to change. And one thing as a board member, I have learned is that they want to put the board members in a box way over on the other side of the building. And when you get to that dais, you just need to accept everything that that superintendent brings to you. I'm just giving you my experience. As a board member, we need to hold our superintendent accountable because that's who we hire. And we also hire our board attorney. Because we hold our superintendent accountable, that does not mean that you don't stay in your lane. That just means that you're doing your job. And because, over the last couple of years, myself as a board member, I can't speak for everyone else, I had really asked our former superintendent a lot of questions that he could not answer. And that information, I would ask for information before we got to the board, and I was not getting the backup that I needed. At that time, I just started voting no, because I cannot vote on something that I don't have that information. So me as a board member, I will never be the rubber stamper that says yes just so that it looks like I get along with everyone else. I'm accountable to the taxpayers. I'm accountable to the students, and I'm accountable to the parents. And you, as a community, have hired me to do my job, and I will do that. Now, with that being said, the former superintendent and I, we did challenge each other. I challenged him, and, but I'm going to tell you, we hired Dr. Moxley. Dr. Moxley was a fantastic superintendent. She was a fantastic role model. And we have a fantastic superintendent now with Dr. David Moore. With Dr. Moxley, we still stay in communications. I respect her and I'll bounce ideas off of her. So, you know, as a board member, we need to not fall into that, into that mindset that we have to do everything that the superintendent says. We don't. We have to hold them accountable. And I'm not saying Mrs. Jones that that's what you're saying. I'm just saying that's from me.
Is there any more rebuttals?
Sure Peggy.
Okay. I I take exceptions to saying public education doesn't change. Public education has changed a lot in in the years I have been in there. Many, many, many changes. And I think change is for the good because of accountability. You know, there's accountability when I taught, but not like it is now. You know, the standards that teachers have to teach, the end of course exams students have to take, what the principals are accountable for on a regular basis for safety in the school. And the superintendent and the school board, it's like a check and balance. You know, anyone who knows me knows that I will say what I want to say. I will do it professionally, but I'm just going to always think for myself. But the check and balance is very, very important with the school board and the superintendent. Otherwise, why even have a school board? Yes, you continue to question. Yes, you continue to challenge. Because we want the desired outcome of student achievement and graduation. And that's not just the beginning. Then where are they going to go after this? You know, we have a lot to do with that, too. We want to make sure they're ready for their next journey. So please understand that I understand accountability in every respect.
Okay, um, let's go around the room to see if, around the virtual room to see if any of you have questions. We'll start with Adam, up in the upper left.
No, I'm good Larry. Thanks.
Okay, how about box number two, Gil Smart. Do you have any questions? You're muted. There you go.
Okay, no, go ahead. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to cross to Louise in box number three, whatever.
Hello.
Okay. Terry, any questions?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to do.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to do a real quick touch base. I know safety of the students is paramount in this age, but I also wanted to share concern that I've heard from the community about safety of the at-risk teachers and staff. And so I just want to make sure that in your plans, that you guys have, have that covered as well, and, you know, like you said, trying to balance the budget and create human resource options for people that may not feel safe. I think that's, that's going to be really critical on this side, so I just want to kind of touch base on that.
Do you want us to respond? Okay.
Thanks, Terry. Did you want them to respond, Terry?
Um, no, I think maybe as they, you know, continue to publish your information and update their, their websites and their campaign, just to make sure that message is clear, and so that everything is communicated, especially with Laura, as, you know, her meetings continue.
Terry, okay. May I ask Terry a question? Can you tell, tell me what you've been hearing, Terry, from this, with relationship to that question?
So my concern is if a particular teacher has, is at risk, has a condition that is considered at risk, how do they separate? And then if they, or even to the point where I've heard students that have family members that live with that are at risk, and so.
Correct.
But obviously, you're trying to address that portion with the students, it's just the portion with the employees, whether the cafeteria staff, or the maintenance workers, or everybody, as far as these policies go forward on, on a district basis, just to make sure, just address.
Can I, can I comment on this? Thank you, I appreciate it. One, one area that we, as a school district, have been trying to, our mindset in this whole COVID situation is grace and compassion. Grace and compassion with our employees, grace and compassion with our students. Something that we, as a school district, want to make sure, if our employees do not feel safe coming back to school, we want to be able to find them a position that they can, work virtually from home. We know that we're going to have many students that are going to want to go the distance learning route. So we want to accommodate those individuals, and we have a system set up so that they can contact HR, and they can, they can fill out a form, and then we'll make sure that we, we can accommodate those needs. So I appreciate you bringing that up, but our mindset is grace and compassion. These are unprecedented times, and they're not, they're not usual times.
Could I add one thing, Terry? I see that, you know, teachers do have a concern about going back. I think it was on the IRCEA website about, you know, with the COVID cases continuing to rise here in Indian River County, is it smart to start back in August, or what kind of plan will there be for teachers like this? And I know that there's a new position on the principle of the virtual school. That person just moved to another school, but they are working on that as far as having support there, because I think we'll have a lot of families and, and students who will want to start with the Indian River Virtual School, especially if the cases start to rise. So you're, you're absolutely right. You know, we're all concerned about our students and staff and teachers, and we want to make sure everybody is as safe as possible. Oh, he's muted. We can't hear him.
All right, there we go.
You're muted.
I've been trying all day long not to do that, and I finally did. So we have, we're going to give you each about two a minute less if possible. We're running out, running out of time here. But if you could, Laura, if you'd like, if there's anything we missed, if you'd like to summarize, or whatever you'd like to say.
No, I just appreciate this opportunity. I love education. I love what we're doing here in our school district, and I'm very passionate about it as my opponent is. So I think we could probably talk about this for a long time. I, I thank you for the opportunity to share with you. It's been my honor to serve this great community as your school board member in District Three and as your board chair for the last two years. I am asking you for your endorsement, because I want to finish the work I began. I spent my first three years on the school board, challenging the status quo, questioning the budget, asking a lot of questions, bringing about the needed changes in leadership to put us on the current path that we're on. I made bold, tough decisions that were in the best interest of our students. When we're dealing with our kids, time is of the essence. They grow up so fast. We cannot expect to see change if we keep repeating the practices of the past that are not working. I am a visionary. I want to, I want to, I'm always thinking outside the box of how can we do what we're doing, but do it better. I will not settle for mediocre. I have proven that I'm a courageous leader, even during times that it's, it, it has appeared to be adversarial. My next four years, I want to continue to be the voice on the board that pushes for maximizing, as our mission statement says, maximizing the full potential of all our students. I appreciate this time. I appreciate the opportunity to, to share my thoughts with everyone. But if you want to learn more about me or contact me, please go into laurazork.com and reach out to me. Otherwise, everyone have a safe, safe summer, and we'll, we'll get through this together.
Thanks, Laura. Peggy?
After I talked with many, many groups and individuals from August through December of last year, and I set my three platforms, I really thought about this before I filed in January. I came to the conclusion that not only do I know this community, I respect this community, and I believe in this school district, and I also believe in any school where a child can feel successful. I've been a change agent about four times in my life, where I've been moved twice mid-year, and then twice at the end of the year, to kind of fix things, to make it a little bit better. I have established relationships with many people in this community, and I have a connection with students. I think anyone who has worked with me will tell you I have a great work ethic. You know, I'm human, I'll make mistakes, but when I do, I own it, I learn from it, I apologize, and I move on. I'm a candidate that wants to be part of the board with a superintendent that sets a tone as we go into these very challenging times. I believe that I have been a strong leader and facilitator, and been recognized by many groups, but as I said in the beginning, it's, it's when a student would come up to me and say that, you know, you did something for me, and you changed what was going on, and you helped me. I understand the board responsibilities. I'm not looking for a job, I'm looking for an opportunity to serve, because I care about this community. Believe me, I'm one to question things if I don't understand, or I'm one to tell you if I don't agree. I don't have hidden agendas, I don't go around people, I just try to get the job done. Indian River School District in this community mean the world to me. I ask that you give me a chance to be on the school board, because I will make you proud each and every day, because each and every day, I will work hard for the students, teachers, parents, community, and taxpayers. Please go to my website, peggyjonesforschoolboard.com, and take a look at my testimonials and resume and, and blogs. And I really appreciate this, and I hope everyone stays safe and healthy. And this was a great forum. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Peggy. Thanks for joining us today, taking the time. But, you know, moreover, thanks for agreeing to run and serve the community.
Thank you.
You're hoping to do. It's, it takes a lot to do it. It's not time-consuming, it can be tough sometimes with comments back and forth, but thank you again. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And you can find more information on the elections at tcpalm.com/elections.
Thank you.